Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this council meeting for Monday, May 8th here at Waverne Council. We welcome everybody at home who's viewing this. We welcome all the council members, Councilman Richards, Wheeler, Councilman Mickel, Van Betje, Chessel, and Bailey, and our city employees. We appreciate your attendance here tonight. Today, to start off with, we're going to talk about the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held April 24th, 2017. Do you have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion. Then we accept that, Your Worship.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Are there any additions to the agendas here? If there's no additions, and no one has additions, they will move forward. There's no public hearings and notices, and no delegations here tonight. So we'll move right into the reports of council. Councilor Van Betje, will you please deliver the Facilities Committee?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Facility Advisory Committee met on May 2nd, 2017 at City Hall. First on the agenda was the project update. Maintenance Manager Button reviewed reports submitted for members. Brief updates were given for 2017 projects at the Sula Museum, Signal Hill Art Center, Library, CPP Sports Arena, Workshop Fire Hall, Waverne Leader Center, and the Water Tower in City Hall. And further to that, I did receive some more information from Councilor apart from our Facilities Manager Button in regards to the CPP, just to update the public. The new LVL purlons in the lobby are complete as of last Friday. The T-bar is being put back in. This week, the Sprinkler Company will be here later this week to complete the sprinkler system reconstruction, and ceiling tiles will be going back in by later this week also. So the CPP place roof repair will be predominantly done by the end of this week and substantially complete probably within about two weeks. So it should be all ready to go for the oil show. So I think the oil show board will be happy to hear that. Leisure Facility Plan Review. Director Warren reviewed updated information previously supplied to members. A lengthy discussion regarding future culture, sports, and recreation projects took place. Director Warren was asked to get additional information from the Parks Department and City Council, which will be brought forward and discussed at the next meeting. Meeting was adjourned, and next meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 9th at 4:00 PM.
Any questions? Councilor Bailey, will you deliver the Waverne Agriculture Society?
Thank you, Your Worship. My report is from the April 4th meeting, and the meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM on that date. Minutes were presented, moved, and adopted and presented. On business arising from the meetings, we're happy to announce that the Volunteer of the Year nominee has been chosen, and that is Brian Niesner for his work with the Egg Society. And the Flavors of Fall Committee was the runner-up for that. The Flavors of Fall has been a very active, new project by the Egg Society, and we look forward to this fall's work on that also. The new website is under construction, as they call it. I volunteered to help with that, Your Worship, but they denied my interest in that, so thank goodness. It was also under correspondence. We have requests from the Waverne 4-H Light Force Club, sponsorship for their arena and the use of a sound system, and that will be going ahead on July 2nd for their show. The arena will be made ready for them, and that's always a great thing for the Waverne 4-H people to have access to that facility up there. Also in correspondence, the Junior Hartford Show in 2019, and we have a request to host that again. Brings a lot of people to our community, and so a quote will be worked out for them to use the facilities up there of the Agriculture Society. Waverne has hosted that, I believe, in previous years, and always brings a lot of people to town. As far as the fair goes for the 4-H this year, there's corporate sponsorship for the 4-H breakfast, and that's Nelson Motors of Avonlea is sponsoring the breakfast again. But they're going to do it on their own this year. They're going to bring the barbecues and feed everybody, and so it takes away all the volunteers that need to be. So thank you to Nelson Motors for stepping up to their place, just working out the location for them depending on the weather, and so that'll go ahead as we said. The Young Fellows will be doing the Grad Supper on June 10th, and that's right after the oil show. The oil show has been gracious enough to allow the crossover there for timing and everything to go ahead, and so you can see that our fairgrounds is going to be a very busy place in the near future.
An entertainment committee had been set up, and I spoke about that last report. We're happy to announce that the Egg Society has a lot of new stuff coming for the fair this year. As I spoke of before, the previous ride people were not coming, and we're a little worried about it. There will be announcement real soon, once contracts are signed and everybody is signed up, and you look for the Egg Society will be doing a press release on that. But I would just like to inform our community, there's going to be lots of activity there for this fair. Was a little concerned at one time. The 4-H Club has asked the use of the Chad's Building for the barbecue during the show, and that's been granted and everything. One of the things that has come up with the Egg Society for the fair days, and I volunteered all council for this, and especially you, Your Worship, there will be a dunk tank. I'm going to manage that for everybody, so I did put your names down on that, and I hope you're okay with that. And that is my report, Your Worship.
That'll be your last report. I appreciate your volunteer. But if it's warm. Councilor Van Betje, do you have an environmental committee report, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. An Environment Committee met on May 3rd, 2017. First on the agenda was an update to Waverne's curbside recycling program. The city of Waverne has entered into an agreement with Regan's Disposal for Curbside Recycling Services. Bins have been ordered and will be delivered to each household in June. The program is slated to begin July 1st. A schedule will be provided to each household with recycling pickup days to fall on different days than the regular garbage pickup. Residents who choose to opt out of the city program are required to be signed up with a provider by May 1st. Citizens do not need to contact the city to advise that they have opted out. Their providers are required to provide the city with this information. Committee member Dan Cognit advised that Calliope Disposal has decided to discontinue their residential recycling services. The existing cardboard bins currently located on East Avenue will still be available to the public, but relocated in June to the Regan's Disposal Ground on 18th Street. The spring cleanup, the landfill coupons, the 2017 coupons went out in the Waverne this week in April. Mayor's Cleanup Day will be held on Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. A hot dog lunch will be held afterwards for all those who participated. Household Hazardous Waste Day will be held at the Public Works Roundhouse on June 3rd from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Sarcan will also be open on this day to accept paint and electronics only. Highway Entrance Cleanup will be held on Saturday, May 27th. Volunteers are welcome to sign up in advance by contacting Laura Morissette. In other discussion, the landfill operational study, it was advised that a draft of the study should be ready in two weeks for the city's review. The final report could potentially be in place by June or July. Water Conservation, with the recent removal of the weekly watering restrictions, the committee would like to remind the citizens of Waverne's of the importance of sensible water practices during the summer months. And that was the end of the meeting. There is no date set for the next meeting as of yet.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that everyone at home realizes again about the mayor's cleanup date here this Saturday. It was nice to see everyone that is available to come out. We're just going to go downtown, clean up all the city as best we can in the downtown area that so many citizens come in to see and our visitors come to see. We just want to make a good effort. We'll be meeting here at the Waverne City Hall to kick off at 9:00 in the morning. We'll be out there. Jeff will be in his bright orange coveralls. You should be just getting out by then, shouldn't you? Anyway, they'll let you keep those for a while, so. Those letters will cover over, but anyway, on the back. But other than that, we'll keep going, and then there'll be a hot dog hamburger meal provided at the end of the morning by 11:30, 12:00. Appreciate everybody coming out for that. Councilor Richards, can you give us the... No, Councilor Van Betje, I guess it's Building Department report again, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Building Department Development Building Report for April 2017 Building Permits. During the month of April 2017, the city of Waverne issued 12 building permits with a total construction value of $781,500. Permits were asphaltous. Two permits were issued for commercial renovations with a construction value of $300,000. One permit issued for a commercial cold storage shed with a construction value of $10,000. Six permits issued for residential addition alterations with a construction value of $54,500. Two permits issued for residential garages with a construction value of $17,000. One permit issued for one new dwelling unit with a construction value of $400,000. Year-to-date, we have issued 25 building permits with a total construction value of just over $2.3 million. In April 2016, year-to-date, the city had issued 15 building permits with a total construction value of $3.18 million. Development Permits. In April 2017, we have issued three development permits. Permits included development of a new car wash on Sims Avenue, one guy and a grill mobile concession, one billboard sign along the highway corridor. Home Occupations. One home occupation was reviewed and issued in April 2017 for a bookkeeping business. Signed permits, two signed permits were reviewed and issued in 2017, and three zoning requests were received, reviewed, and issued in 2017. This report was put together by Licensed Building Official Amanda Coffin.
Councilor Richards, can you deliver our Fire Department report, please?
Thanks, Your Worship. For the month of March, there were 12 calls for service, all of these calls located in the city of Waverne. Excuse me, and they break down as follows. Five automatic fire alarm activations comprised of the following: two multi-residential occupancies and three single residential occupancies. Also, one structural fire, two hazardous materials responses, one perceived emergency call, two unauthorized burning calls, and one dumpster fire. As I said, total calls in the city were 12. No rural calls during the month. For fire prevention and public education, the department did 24 property inspections or follow-up inspections, one fire truck visit, and five fire hall tours were conducted. Training and professional development again took place. Thirteen training sessions were held for the paid-on-call firefighters for a total training time of 57 hours. Career staff training hours were 51. Training topics this month included health and safety, NFPA 1002 pump operations, driver training, search and rescue, salvage and overhaul, incident command, and wildfire operation procedures. Just in miscellaneous other notes, 54 notifications of rural burning were received and forwarded, broken down to the rural areas as follows. In the RM of Waverne, there were 30; four in the RM of Lowman; six in the RM of Wellington; two in the RM of Broken Shell; four in the RM of Griffin; one in the RM of Simry; one in the RM of Francis; and six in the hamlet of North Waverne. Battery recycling, a total of 38 pounds of batteries were collected and sent away to retrieve technologies for recycling. Also, seven large breathing air cylinders were filled on a contract basis for oilfield safety service operators, and eight small air cylinders filled for other users. Finally, one paid-on-call firefighter requested and was granted a four-month leave of absence for personal reasons. That report submitted by Fire Chief Simon Allman.
No further questions, then these will be marked as received and filed. Thank you. Consent Agenda, Cash Activity Report.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the item Cash Activity Report for March 2017 on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Motions? There's an accounts payable motion with a pecuniary interest?
Yes, I have interest. I'll step out.
Your Worship, I'd make a motion that that purchase dated May 4th, 2017, in the amount of... Did you want to report on that first before I did? No. In the amount of $814.65 where a pecuniary interest has been disclosed, be passed for payment.
Second?
Your Worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Pecuniary interest is just like the public... No?
Yeah, so the reason that we have a pecuniary interest is Councilor Chessel has vested interest in New Age Motorsports, and we had purchases totaling the amount of $814.65 purchased from that business. So he was asked or removed himself when the decision was made.
All in favor? Carrie unanimously. While you're out of the room, also, Councilor Chessel, you're doing three rounds in the dunk tank. We have... Counts payable?
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,561,633.61 from April 21st to May 4th, 2017 be passed for payment.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? Was that... Did you... I received that one note there. The... Our bill for the water, what is it, the watershed authority or membership, was that paid on this one? No?
No, I don't think it's been paid yet.
Okay. So we'll discuss that one then later on. Okay. All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Water Tower Restoration Tender.
So it was advertised in the local paper for tenders to do restoration work on the water tower that included replacing and repairing siding as required, along with prepping and painting all surfaces. This tender price also includes replacing rotted and missing shingles, painting of roof trim and shingles, along with replacing all railing mounts. The budgeted amount for this project was $90,000. We received one tender from Rope Access Industrial in the amount of $80,195 plus GST, and it is administration's recommendation to accept this tender from Rope Access Industrial in the amount of $80,195 plus GST.
Your Worship, I'd like to move that the quote from Rope Access Industrial in Manitoba for the restoration of the water tower in the amount of $80,195 plus GST be accepted.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion?
Dick? Thank you, Worship. Again, there's only one bid for this, Jolene. Maybe that's quite common with something like this, that it's not a big issue with some of the contractors. This individual group is out of Manitoba, I believe? Yeah, I think they did some work with us before in that area. So again, it's one of those situations where I talked about two weeks ago, and it's nice to have a couple bids to know where you're coming from. Even though it is under budget, it's always nice to have a nice, comfortable feeling when somebody else bids and you know where you're at. Just I make those comments.
Yes, my other comment that I'd like to discuss here is, first and foremost, why are we repairing this? Is this a historical building?
Yes.
Is it deemed as a historical landmark?
Yeah, this has been deemed as a municipal heritage property, so really, that gives us, the city council, to the rights, I guess, to make upgrades to it, but yes, it has been deemed a municipal heritage property, so it's up to us to upkeep it, for sure.
Yes, and I think it's a opportune time to do it, Your Worship. The cedar siding that's on there now isn't in too bad a shape, but it's at the point now where if it doesn't get redone fairly shortly, then the cost to repair it and fix it up is going to become substantially higher. So I think it's important that we do keep this property well-maintained, and like I say, at this point in time, it's a nominal cost for such a large building.
And just before we go on to this, has there been a kind of like a review of all historical sites or sites that we're keeping here? Has there... When is the last time there was ever a review done on all these sites? Do you know, Jolene?
Well, I have a report here from Director of Leisure Services Matthew Warren that was provided to former city manager Smith, November 1st, 2011, and it reviews all of the Waverne Municipal Heritage Properties, kind of breaks them out from municipal heritage properties to provincial heritage properties, and lists when they were both reviewed. There's a bylaw for each of the city municipal ones, so I believe they were last reviewed in 2011. But I believe the Facilities Committee may have more information on that, too.
Yeah, right handy I don't, but I would suspect that Matthew has a full list and updated schedule of all the heritage facilities, but I think...
Just to know where our costs are, how much our cost, and how much we're actually spending, especially in this time of huge restraints coming into here.
For sure, yeah. I do feel that the city water tower is an icon for the city. Like, people recognize it from miles and miles away. It's probably one of the more important heritage sites, I think, that the city does have.
Sorry, to answer your question, though, yes, I do believe that there is... These are part of the facilities plan. It's not just something that has come up. It is part of the 10-year plan to look at each of these historical properties as well. So it's not just a random thing that was done. It is part of the facility's future plans as well, so.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jolene, is there any grants available for this type of stuff on a heritage property?
I'm not aware of any that were for this one, and I believe if there was, Director of Leisure Services Warren would have been all over it, because he is definitely on it.
I know he's all over those things, so, but this is right out of our budget, and there's nothing for grants in this one.
I don't believe there is, Councilor Bailey. I know that we have some budgeted funds that have been allocated to the museum for restoration, for doing some restoration at the museum, but there was nothing available for the...
Okay, thank you.
For the water tower at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it was checked out, for sure.
Just for a point, last point of clarification. So this was a plan by facilities to paint and spend this money and budget it for this money?
Yes, Your Worship. It has been budgeted, and it was... It's in the long-term plan, so yes, it was put into the budget for this year. So it was a budgeted item, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Our next item is Waverne Agriculture Society Outdoor Event Liquor Permit. Jolene?
The Waverne Egg Society's annual exhibition will be held on July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2017. They are requesting a community event license for their beer gardens at the exhibition. The following times that are being requested are for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, from the times of 1:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Our chief of police has asked for a security plan to be provided before that this gets or pending this gets approved, so that's the only stipulation that administration has asked for.
In hearing that, Your Worship, I'd like to move that the request from the Waverne Agriculture Society for the assurance of an outdoor liquor permit by the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for the following dates and times be approved upon submission of a security plan to the chief of police. Monday, July 3rd, 2017. My notes say 2016, but I'm sure it's 2017. From 1:00 to 12... 1:00 PM to 12:00 PM. Tuesday, July 4th, from 1:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And Wednesday, July 5th, from 1:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carrie unanimously. With that, there's no introduction bylaws, no old business. Run a new business. Development Permit Application by Prairie Peta.
Your Worship, we've received a request from Bikram Sandhu, who owns and operates Prairie Peta, and wishes to operate his business on city property throughout the summer during sporting games and other community events. This is applied for under a temporary development permit and requires the approval of council as it involves the use of public property. They wish to operate at either Jubilee Park or River Park during every weekend for the months of May to June. The proposal constitutes a low-impact temporary use, the main concerns for which are typically regarding effects on parking, waste disposal, and access to washrooms. However, at public events, there are the additional concerns that the organizations in charge have already arranged for concession services, often with the proceeds donated back to the organization. For this reason, requests from mobile businesses to operate in public parks were denied in the past, and the Waver miner associations, which utilize Jubilee Park, were not interested in having a mobile concession set up. There was a... Within this same request, there was a development permit application from Prairie Peta seeking permission to block the two parking stalls in front of their business in order to provide outdoor food service to their patrons. They wish to operate this service daily from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The city has only approved street vendors for special occasions, and typically when the street is blocked, being blocked from traffic. Administration's recommendations for the request... First request is that Prairie Peta for temporary placement of a concession on public property during special events be denied based on the following: city parks are not zoned for commercial use on a regular basis, and sporting events held in Jubilee Park are controlled by nonprofit associations which provide their own concessions. For the second request, administration's recommendation is at the request of Prairie Peta to block the two parking stalls in front of their business at 132 Third Street Northeast to provide a food service be denied for the following reasons: providing outdoor food service in a location primarily used for street parking and adjacent to vehicular traffic could create safety hazards for patrons utilizing the outdoor space. Parking provided on Third Street Northeast is a benefit for all businesses located in the downtown core, and any businesses requesting outdoor space for service, such as patio areas, have been required to develop on their own property.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion on Part 1 that the request of Prairie Peta for temporary placement of a concession on public property during special events be denied based on the following: city parks are not zoned for commercial use on a regular basis, and two sporting events held in Jubilee Park are controlled by nonprofit associations which provide their own concessions.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Discussion? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. I all support this motion. I think it's the right answer, but I... I'm curious, as a city, if we looked at this policy enough to think about, you know, allowing vendors. I think these are becoming more and more popular, the food trucks, if you will, for lack of a better term. Is there some... Is there warranted the discussion around allowing them to expand in our city? I don't know that anybody in particular wants to answer that. I just put it forward as something to think about.
I would agree also, Your Worship. I think where the struggle is, is we are cutting into charitable organizations that are handling these situations, so that's directly competing with them. There is always that option on city property, from what I understand, so... And I think it's great what they're trying to do, trying to create some. I give that to them. I do like the idea of having something downtown. Maybe they can just look at doing what other vendors have, is have a small table outside the front door. Maybe that's a better avenue than blocking parking, but I commend them. They're trying to make something happen for a community at least, so... But I won't be in motion of this favor.
You were warning on the first one, though, right? About the parks. That was the second one. Your comments are on the second one. The part on... We say in the parks, and I... The part on, we say in the parks, and I think that's where there becomes this old struggle between the businesses are upset with the charitable companies, too, cutting into their business, and they want to compete. And are we still in a, are we open for fair and equal competition all the way through? Mind you, it's city parks, but they should be trying to work together with the baseball tournaments, or approach directly to the leagues themselves, as opposed to going out, and that would be probably a better idea, work within the teams and that, to provide and give them some service back. Jolene?
Yeah, for sure, and that is an option, right? So they can work with those, like minor baseball, all those organizations. If they were to get permission from one of those organizations, we would just put another request forward with specific dates, and really, the organization's permission that they're okay with them being there. So this is just not allowing them to be there every weekend, really. So it's not saying they can't do it at all, but they would have to work with those nonprofit organizations, the minor football, minor soccer, all those organizations as well.
Good discussion. Right. All in favor of this, of allowing them to?
Deny.
Deny?
Deny.
Okay. Deny? Carried. Go ahead, for part two.
Yeah, your worship, I would put forward a motion that the request of Prairie Peta to block the two parking stalls in front of their business at 132 Third Street Northeast to provide a food service be denied for the following reasons: Providing outdoor food service in a location primarily used for street parking and adjacent to vehicular traffic could create safety hazards for patrons utilizing the outdoor space. Also, parking provided on Third Street Northeast is a benefit for all the businesses located there in the downtown core. And finally, any business requesting outdoor space for service or patio area has been required to develop this on their own property.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Again, I believe that what the whole nature of this is, that we're not saying you can't be outside, but there's other businesses that down there, down the street, have set up small patio tables outside on the sidewalk, which is not impeding, and they can do that type of stuff. Mr. Richards?
I agree, your worship, absolutely. What we're saying is, be aggressive, grow your business, do what it takes, but we can't take away two parking stalls that, you know, other businesses utilize as well. And the police chief has said, you know, he's got some concerns with public safety there, so we encourage the businesses to grow and get aggressive, but we have to deny this one.
And again, not saying that you can't put tables outside, it's just not in the parking zone.
Your worship, I'd like to add on that a bit. I think, I think it's a great idea, a great concept, but I also think it's up to the city businesses, or the downtown businesses, to maybe come together and form some kind of an agreement, and maybe create times where they have outside vendors, where they might block off the streets to allow people to just meander around and enjoy what Waverne has to offer, but like, because city council, it's pretty tough for us to say yes to one. Like, if it was a group coming to us, it might be a little bit more easy to receive that.
Further discussion? Call to vote? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Fire school. Chief?
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I am before you today to discuss an invitation that we've received as the Waverne Fire Department from the Saskatchewan Volunteer Fire Fighters Association to hold the fall fire school. They typically hold two schools a year, one in the spring, one in the fall. Waverne last hosted the school in 2008, and by all accounts, it was a great success. The potential dates for this year's school are September 15 to 17, 2017. The invitation to hosting a fire school should not be taken only as a compliment to the host department, but also to the community. The city of Waverne has earned an enviable reputation for hosting provincial events with our oil show and other sporting events. Our accommodation, hospitality, recreation, and restaurant facilities are more than capable of sustaining an event of this size and complexity. Courses offered at this school are at the discretion of the host department. My preliminary thoughts for this are fire incident command, hazardous materials, fire ground operations, search and rescue. Outside facilitaries will be brought in as required, however, a wide depth of talent exists within our own organization to teach these at a desired level. I have checked with various organizations within the city and other city departments, and it appears that there's nothing else scheduled for these dates. The financial implications, it is anticipated that this event will have no negative impact upon the department's budget. Participants will pay a weekend tuition fee to the program, and that will be on a cost-recovery basis, and will also be responsible for their own accommodations. There should be a very positive financial implication to the various hotels and restaurants within our city. And it is my recommendation that council support this initiative, and that council approve the use of the City of Waverne Fire Department facilities and equipment during this fall school.
Your worship, I'll make a motion at the request of the Fire Chief Allman to host the 2017 SVFFA Fall Fire School be approved, based on the assumption that the special event insurance be purchased.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Van Benshut?
Sure. Yes, Chief Allman. I think, yeah, it was a consideration with myself anyways, that the special event insurance be purchased just to ensure the equipment and et cetera that would be used by the city in case there is an incident, not hoping that there is one, so is that possible to have that taken care of?
We could do that. The question's going to be, does it, which, does it come out of the fire department's budget, or the fire brigade's budget, or the city's budget? And is there an overlap with their existing, their existing insurance from our city?
Yeah, my assumption would have been, it would have been part of the cost recovery of the tuition, but I could be incorrect. That was just my assumption, sorry.
Go ahead, Jolene.
Who, where, there's profit, you said it was very, like, financially good for the city when they hosted in 2008, so who, where do the profits go? What are they utilized for?
It goes into the fire brigade account, and earmarked this year to ask you send them to the, to the spring FDICO fire school in Indianapolis next year. If you recall, that was a motion before council during budget time, it was denied. I still believe it's a worthwhile undertaking, and they do, too. So they're hoping to host this fire school and use the profits that are made from this to send people to that school.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, your worship. Chief Allman, I commend you and your staff and your volunteers to take on a project like this and host this in Waverne. I think it's very important that we, that we take on projects like this and for a great cause. I just have a question on the insurance. Does anybody know what kind of cost that would be to, to take on the insurance? Do we have any idea of that?
Not right now, no. We did check into it. There is, obviously, we can get the insurance, but I, the cost of the equipment that's going to be utilized, unfortunately, I have the same information that you guys have there. I didn't know exactly what facilities we'd be utilizing in that, so I'm going to leave that up to Chief Allman to get those figures and then check into the insurance. And if it's being purchased by the brigade, that should be them moving forward with it, not the city, I believe.
Okay, but in saying that, I, yeah, I guess, to find out that cost, but would our, would our city insurance cover our own people in this, as a training exercise for part of it, or is it only the out-of-town people that we're concerned with coming in? Because I would think our, our own staffing would be covered under our own insurance.
Yeah, I would believe so. I think the issue is that there's 250, 350 additional people coming in utilizing our equipment. The profit's going to the brigade to send them to training, which is great, but if there's any damages to the fire truck and that, that's the residents of the City of Waverne that have to be picking up that tab. So that's just why I think that it's in our best interest to make sure that we're covered on that, for sure.
Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I'll be supporting Counselor Chessel's motion, because it includes the insurance. That being said, I would hate to see us get caught up in a long debate over what is very likely to be not a lot of money to provide this insurance. I think Counselor Bailey's touched on it. Chief Allman, this is a great initiative, and I appreciate the effort of he and his department for putting this together. It's great for the city. It's great for all of our local businesses, so I'll be supporting it, and I hope we don't get too caught up. I think the administration can get this insurance issue figured out with very little consternation.
I think the other thing we did look at, too, is this is the same weekend as the Chamber Expo here in Waverne, so it'd be great having an additional 250, 350 people in our community to go through the Chamber Expo and see what the city does have to offer, so it is a good time and good weekend for it, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried. So I guess your task is to figure out the insurance, brings back insurance on that, on there, and there may be some other discussion, some other things that are going to be added into that also, on that weekend. There's no inquiries or announcements? Is there anything that anybody else would like to add here? Is there anything from the press that we would like to have asked? Mr. Van Benshut, do you have any more comments?
I have something to report. So the recapping of 16th Street, right beside the water treatment plant, will begin this weekend. They were hoping to start it Thursday or Friday, and continue on to next week, so we should have that detour gone here shortly, but it'll be a nice road to drive on when it is gone, so it worked out great, so.
And we have our city crews out filling in potholes. One man is out there filling constant potholes. Any, report of any other, of noticeable potholes that you've, that are disturbing you, send, make sure you phone our city hall here, and we'll pass those along to them. Make sure that's being done. Commend all the city workers for what they've been doing, and also for our city works over there in the water system as we get ready to go on to the next phase of our building of the reservoir here. And with that, I'd like to say good night to everyone out in Waverne. Thank you for your support of this council. Our council is working hard for you, and if you have any questions there, feel free to contact myself or any one of my knowledgeable council here, and city hall workers, and we're here to work and serve to you, and make Waverne just this better place to live and a wonderful place to be here. With that, we'll close the meeting.